Good morning. I'd like to call the meeting to order at nine thirty. And I would like to begin by acknowledging that Jasper National Park and the municipality of Jasper are on thirty-six and thirty-eight territories, as well as Mateam Region Four. This land is the traditional territory, meeting ground, gathering place, traveling route and home, the Dinesa, Nehewak, Anushnabi, Sekhremcheck, Stony, Nakota and Mateam. The municipality of Jasper acknowledges the land and these territories, honoring the relationship indigenous peoples have with this land, to remind us of our responsibility and obligations to this place and to indigenous peoples, and to affirm our accountability to address the ongoing impacts of colonization that continue to affect indigenous peoples. Welcome, everyone, on this rainy Tuesday morning, a rain that we're all very grateful for. I'm looking at councilors, I'm wondering if there are any additions to the agenda today? If not, would someone move that we approve the agenda as said circuit? Thank you, Councilor Melnick, all those in favor? We are moving on to number four. Is there any business arising from the May ninth meeting? The minutes of this meeting were approved May sixteenth twenty twenty. And none, we'll move on then to delegations. We have Mary Ann Guerra, I believe, speaking on behalf of Habitat for the Arts. Welcome, Mary Ann.
Morning, thank you for your time. You received the presentation from me in your package. As of November twenty twenty-two, it was a requirement for our program policy F one oh four to report every six months or come back within six months and tell how we're doing. You can see the... Do you have any questions about reports that I sent? From October to December was the last quarter of twenty twenty-two, and then January to March was the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. It lined up the hours that were open, the way the room is used, the way the rooms are used, the classes and special events, and the way the rooms are booked. And we have to do, to comply with the policy, we do a community engagement once every three months. And there was a survey sent in January, and the results of the survey are in there as well. Do you have any questions? The policy F one oh four was put into place on November fifteenth twenty twenty-two with Habitat. We're doing a quarterly engagement in June. We're having an open house at a cafe. People can come and ask questions instead of a survey.
Mayor Ireland. Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer, and thank you Ms. Gera for your report, which I was able to review prior to the meeting. I do have a number of small questions, short questions. It is not specifically part of your report, but I think you alluded to it. And we have a copy of an agreement between Habitat and the municipality. It's attached to our director's report. So can you confirm that that agreement was something that the parties negotiated and agreed upon?
Is that the policy F one oh four?
Well, not the policy, but the agreement that flows from the application of the policy.
Okay, yes, I know about the agreement that we sent. Yes, Christopher and I met a couple of times in twenty twenty-two, and we did work on the input back and forth as to what that policy would be for Habitat.
All right, I appreciate that. So that's an agreement. It didn't have council involvement other than the fact that the policy that council approved required in some instances that agreement be struck with groups that use our facilities and with whom we might have a financial arrangement. So that's an agreement. When you say in your report that you have been advised that policy one oh four should be revised, is it a policy or is it the agreement, or is it both that are in need of some adjustment?
I met with Christopher last week, and he mentioned that it would have to be revisited for twenty twenty-three. And I, we haven't talked any further, so I'm not sure what that readjustment, relook will be, rethink. That was last...
But again, is it, is it both the policy, which I think you might have some input on the policy, but it's a council policy? Is it the policy that is to be reviewed, or is it the agreement that was entered into pursuant to the policy, or is it both?
Back to me. Deputy Mayor Waxer through to your worship and on behalf of Ms. Gera. So I think, Mr. Mayor, you are correct in that Ms. Gera uses the word "policy" interchangeably with the word "agreement." And so the signed agreement that we have that meets the F one oh four policy is, is the agreement that we have to re-sign again for this year, which we have yet to do because we have not been to determine whether or not last year's was working well for both parties. And so that's where I think it sits. We are not talking about changing the policy as far as I can tell, but we are talking about what adaptations or evolutions to the agreement could serve both parties.
Okay, that is, that resolves my dilemma. If it's a policy change that's required that comes to this table, if it's the terms of the agreement doesn't necessarily engage council. I did notice that there is a suggestion, again, not in your report, but in our director's report, dealing with definitions, for example. What do open hours mean? And there is another term that needed definition. But those are not terms that are defined in policy. So if there is a request that we go back and add terms to the policy, I'd just like to know that otherwise. I'm happy to leave it in other capable hands. More than specific to your report, I noticed that you mentioned high school bands needing a place to practice. Is that a reference? I know that recently, and I didn't hear the band, but I heard reference to a band playing in Robson Park. Was that associated with Habitat?
The high school band from the Camden School for the Arts wandered through town. And about ten days before they arrived, they asked me if they could play here somewhere in town, and I thought, oh, yeah, I can. So we tried to put them on Robson Park, which I booked with Connie. And then it was so hot that we snuggled them up against the buildings in shade. Yes, they played outside for a couple of hours, and they were all dressed in black.
Oh, I missed it, but I understand that those who were lucky enough to wander by.
Yeah, they didn't give us a lot of notice.
You also reference in your report a survey that was conducted?
There was a survey conducted in January. The results are in the January to March report. The survey has nine questions, and we had about one hundred and seventy-five people respond to them. The first ten people to respond got free lunch at one. And then entice people to do the survey. Ask questions like, have you ever been to an event at Habitat? Have you ever been deterred from taking a class at Habitat because of price? Have you any direction for us, or how should we move forward? Have you been volunteered with Habitat? We're seeking new instructors at all times, to the chance to teach or share their skills. Have you, do you have any skills you want to share? What's the best way for us to share information? The only new one that came out is somebody asked if we could get it into school newsletters, which there aren't school newsletters anymore as much as emails. But we've approached all schools, all three schools to, on the first each month, to give them updates on what we're doing. The other seven question was, is it important for us to connect to art artists inside of the community to keep offering expression, like the talents that we bring in from Peter, Alberta, Alberta Music, et cetera? And ninety-eight percent said yes. And included keeping, you know, diverse and creative new opportunities. So question eight, partnerships, I'm wondering who in Jasper we would work well with? Ten percent said they would love to be contacted to talk, and we contacted everybody that left their emails, and several of them have already left town. And we did find one new instructor from this question. Question nine, as people of community conversations, and if they attend them or they'd like to attend them? And a lot of people wanted to attend them, some didn't. Eight percent wanted to add things to them, like photo clubs or film clubs. Which I don't know why they did. And new ideas and solutions are recognized, acted upon, and after the next, and moving forward to the next turn of the input, we'll take this forward. We continue to take ownership for identifying solutions with this input from the community. We received one hundred and seventy-five responses, and cost us two hundred and seventy dollars for the survey and the refresh.
Thank you for that. Of the one hundred and seventy-five responses, do you have sense of how those respondents found out about the survey? Where was it advertised? Who would have received notice that there was a survey to which they could respond?
The survey was available on the Jasper local site. In the fit you, I put a QR tag with survey news. And I think the fit you did a story for us at that time. And social media, social media, social media.
If I just may, continue a bit. Social media, social media, social media. What does that mean from your perspective? Does Habitat have an Instagram account, a Facebook page, that sort of stuff? Is that where?
Yes, we have a Facebook page. We send it out to all the HR departments. We send it to cost offices. We send it to teachers and Alberta Travel, if it's related to what the tourists like when they're here. ATIS, A T I S system. Yeah, we're, we put it on Edmonton Art Sites, Calgary Art Sites, and... If it's, and people would come in.
Good. Two questions left. You mentioned in your report community conversations, and for a while there was an arts and culture community conversation. That was discontinued as municipal direction. And you indicated that you now attend or have it had it ends the adult and the senior conversation. Do you find a change in engagement based on the the absence of a specific community conversation focused on arts and culture?
When it was an arts and culture conversation, it went and was held in arts and culturally related spaces. It brought twice, I believe, people into Habitat to sit in the big room and see the space. I think that it was nice to see the new faces and new spaces. Yeah, it kind of, if you look at the town as a demographic group, that's what they're doing now, is the demographics of youth, seniors, adults. Whereas I think groups, I think the other groups brought more connection between those demographics. But we go to them, we share, I think it's all working.
Thank you for that. My final question, financial. I note in the agreement that we spoke of earlier, there is reference to quarterly payments. My recollection is that when council made changes at budget time, we were suggesting an initial advance and a six-month report, which would allow for the release of further funds. So my recollection, that I could be wrong, is that council was looking at two allotments annually. You're now looking at quarterly, but that was part of a negotiated agreement with with the community developer on behalf of the...
There were questions about definitions of words. I don't know if this is the place to define words, but bookable hours, that's on. In thirteen weeks or a quarter of the year, there's one thousand ninety-seven bookable hours. What was the other one? Open doors, open doors were open, well, in January to March, the door was open four hundred and ninety-three hours, for an average of thirty-seven hours. And October to December, the door was open three hundred and ninety-eight hours, for an average of thirty-three hours. People who are instructors or in people using the space or, you know, the piano room or the tech room, they have access to forty-four hours a week. They have codes for the door. They have passed security checks.
I appreciate that, and again, outside of the policy, the parties' game duty agreement. I understand the usefulness of defining terms before you get started, because obviously there is some difference of opinion. And I can leave that to, to the parties. And I suppose if council help is required later, that they can act. My, my general understanding of the policy is that we were looking at formal, necessary, and informal where appropriate, but recognizing that there is a level at which a financial engagement by municipality requires some documentation. So the policy is not intended to create obstacles, but rather to generate a degree of certainty. And there seems to be still some lack of certainty, but I'm confident that can be addressed. Anyway, thank you very much for your report and your answers to my question. And thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer for allowing me so much time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Councilor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, and thank you Mary Ann for coming today. I just have a couple of questions for you. You had mentioned earlier some, a public engagement session in June at a coffee shop. Is there a date and a time and a place for that?
I'm working with a coffee shop, either Coco's or possibly the Legion, and maybe Andromeda. And it's working around staff issues and open hours. And I want it to be the most accessible, so I don't want a daytime. And a lot of places aren't open evenings, and if they are, they're busy. I won't give June fifteen to seventeen.
Awesome. My other question for you, Mayor Ireland, to touch a little bit on the community conversations. You do attend the adult ones, you were kind of mentioning earlier how you're having trouble getting a commission to the students. Do you attend the youth, early childhood and the school age conversations?
I work close, anything we do, I tend to send to Anna DeClerc and Tori Bang, people like that, so helping get the youth attention. And I do work closely with the schools being right here. Several of our instructors upstairs are teachers. So I don't necessarily try to go to those meetings, but we do represent seniors, adults.
Great. And my last question, I understand what bookable hours would mean, public open hours? Would that just mean the doors open, anyone can come in? And what would they be offered to do, or could they show up in like kind of a pottery pizzeria? Pottery, pottery staff, altar, like what exactly is that like?
When the doors are open, you can come in and ask questions. You can see the space, you can see what the potential of the space is. You can register for classes, you can ask me anything. Thank you.
Councilor Melnick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer, and welcome, Mary Ann. Appreciate you being here this morning. My couple of questions relate to how people find out about the programs in the community. And you did mention social media. In the survey, it indicated that posters and ads weren't that effective. You didn't mention anything. I see you have things on the community calendar, the municipal calendar. Do you, can you track responses from people finding out about programs on the calendar? Or, because I see the calendar is quite extensive with contact information and cost and details.
And can you track how people use the community calendar? We can track how people use our e-commerce site. And we have some analytics on how people find us through Facebook and stuff. But we don't administer the community calendar, so we don't, I have no idea. And maybe Bob Koby can check the analytics on if people use the Jasper local events page. But otherwise, we're just a Habitat page on Facebook, Instagram, and our e-commerce sites.
Great, thank you. And in both quarters, you reported on volunteer hours and volunteer opportunities. Who are the volunteers? What are the nature, is that included instructors? Is that individuals assisting with being there when the doors are open? I just want to understand the volunteer base a little bit more.
We have volunteers, move around the building. We have volunteers in the pottery room to help keep it clean. We have volunteers in the after-school program when it is run. She needs assistance. We have volunteers for the summer camps. Some volunteer positions are paid. Then we call them instructors. Volunteers in the evenings. Yeah, just to keep the doors open and to answer questions. And while they're there, they can paint or read or engage people. We have a Monday morning drop-in program, that's run by Jennifer Otway, when she's available. And it's volunteer run, and it's all ages. Volunteers can do just about anything. They don't normally keep the door open. That's my job. Yeah, I've got volunteers lined up for the welcome staff thing. Some things that can be everywhere. I send volunteers to the community conversations to collect, bring back volunteers.
You're good. And we've been able to also entice other volunteers to join or people that aren't currently in your volunteer base?
Yeah, we have, there's a site on Facebook called Volunteer Jasper. And we've had that for probably ten years now. We put things on there seeking, oh my God, there's an event coming up, we need some help. And people reach out. The most recent one I did was probably four or five weeks ago. We got three new volunteers from that, so that's nice. And volunteers, then you need to know if they will work outside. Do you like to be outside, do you like children? So there's all different ways we can use them. Yeah, you can't always just plunk a volunteer into the space and say, this is what you're doing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer, and I apologize, I didn't get to this earlier, I'd forgotten about it. But apart from the issue that's been identified defining terms within the agreement, there seems to be an underlying issue involving community perception of what Habitat offers as opposed to what it does in fact offer. Have you considered how Habitat can better articulate to the community what it offers? So you've indicated that there's some confusion between what the gallery provides and what Habitat provides. So how do you overcome that inherent misunderstanding in the community and better inform the public of what it is that Habitat provides to the community?
Well, these reports to council every so often help the community learn what we do. We talk with JAG to make sure they know what we do and we know what they do to get the people in the community to know what we do. We have open doors, we offer open conversations. What's the question again?
The question was whether you've considered ways in which you can reduce that level of misunderstanding or misperception at a community level? So I'm looking for maybe a phrase that better identifies what Habitat does. You say in your report, you don't sell artwork, you sell experiences, but I'm not sure whether people will appreciate from that exactly what it is Habitat does. So I am interested in whether you have, as an entity, considered how you get out the message about what it is that Habitat offers to the community?
Right, the fit you just did an article, like I said, the article about every four or five months. And that one thing most recently did starts with the line Habitat is space. Space to engage, explore, experiment in all forms of art. You can come up and approach us with your idea. You can, that, that's the best way I can explain what we are and the best way I can get it. It's so simple, Habitat is space. We don't do the programs, we seek the people to do the programs. We're approachable. We need to eliminate those barriers because they're only stifling creativity. You know that? In the June twenty twenty-two conversation notes, you'll see that the arts conversation that was upstairs talked about a communal working space. And that was a year ago. And nobody has approached us to talk about communal working space in a year. So I'm not sure who those people are that want to use this space. What have they been offered for alternatives?
You know, other hands up at the moment, I had a couple of questions. I was wondering if the open hours are regular and advertised as such, or if they're as available? And that's my first question.
Habitat is open ten to one, Tuesday through Saturday. That is advertised, and it's in the fit you with the QR tag. And we've been running an ad for three months. It's on the stairs, it's on posters, it's on social media, it's at the schools. Uh, it's on the stairs, it's on posters, it's on social media, it's at the schools, it's HR departments. So we do advertise that we're there for the three confirmed hours a day on Tuesdays, I'm there till five o'clock in the afternoon, so Tuesday's a long day. When we're open, there's a sign at the foot of the stairs, it says, usually says, come on up, see what we're doing, there's uh. All kinds of, it's hard to get people to walk up those stairs sometimes, but if you, I leave the door open with some music on. So you can hear there's, it's up there. But yeah, we're open, con- confirmed, ten to one every single day. And much more than.
My other question is, uh, it, there's a line that says, I've noted the forty-four hours a week. That instructors and artists can access when the building is open. Um, so I think you're referring to the um, Library Cultural Center building. And so then the artists that are members that would have a passcode to enter.
Yeah, the ones who pass are securely. Book agreements, and yes, instructors have a free access to the building at any time. The pottery people have free access to use the pottery room for those forty-four hours. Um, yeah. Directors, members, volunteers. And the teachers.
And then my final question was, there was a, I think it's in green writing, it says. It's uh, notes of things that have also come to our attention. Uh, the Robson Park arson market and the three hundred dollar banner that was destroyed. I was confused, but.
I just have some things that I wanted to bring to you to attention that um. We're doing a Canada Day market in Robson Park for artisans, um, hoping we'll have thirty in the park. Um, with a busker at each end and a food truck. Um, between the parade and supper time, so it fills the afternoon a little bit. And we asked to pay for that. We're being asked to pay three hundred and one dollars for these rocks, but. I just wonder if there's a reason for that. Um, and then we did have a beautiful banner that was put on the. A school poll, the school poll just over here, and it was. Flapping in the wind the day they put it up, and I kind of said, it's not gonna survive, and it did not survive. And it's costly. I wondered who's responsible for replacing the banner. If it's us, it's us, if it's not, that would be great.
Sorry, could you clarify who installed it?
Uh, who installs banners?
Deputy Mayor Waxer.
Directory.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Waxer, thank you very much, and uh, for everyone, um, the banners are installed by the uh, municipality of Jasper's Operations Department. That we, we. Habitat um, bought the item and gave it to us to install.
Thank you for that clarification. I believe, and similar, Paul also has.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, sorry to go back, um, I just want to revisit your public open hours, Tuesday to Saturday from ten to one. What exactly do you offer the public? If it's just a place to come and ask questions, I wonder if you were. Often something more, you might get more publication, like, if I was to walk up as a person you just met at Jasper, what what would I? What could I do in those three hours?
There's often an exhibition of art on display from the Alberta Foundation for the Arts. Um, there is the opportunity to use. Any tools you want up there, there's off, the room is often set up for engagement right now, if you went up, you could try your hand at pastels. And charcoal. Um, you can check out the pottery room, we get lots of registrations for classes. Um, if it's a drop-in class on, well, on Mondays, when the building isn't open on Mondays, we have a drop, so we're open on Mondays from ten to one as well. And we have a drop-in program for art. You can come up and it could be anything, Jennifer Otway, it could be anything.
Thank you. Um, and then back to your, I think you're saying Canada Day, you're gonna do a um, vendor. And will the, will the vendors be paying to be part of this program, or are you offering the space for free?
We're using it as fundraising vendors, going to be paying for it.
Okay, thank you.
We also run lunch films, Art for Lunch program, where you can come up and watch an NFB film, it's Jan- June twenty-first is Indigenous Day. We have Indigenous films. Um, we often have a program running online, um, with U-Demi, which has lots of art courses, you can come up and. Throw the TV on and learn how to draw.
Are there further questions of? Ms. Garrett. Thank you for your presentation. Um, I'm. Wondering now if. We would then move on to.
Motion to accept it, alright.
Motion to accept the the presentation for information, that's for all. All, all those in favor? Thank you.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Waxer, I just wanted to note that there is a specific request. Um, and I would be happy to defer that until after we hear the next report, but I don't want the. The presenter to think that we've ignored it. We understand that there is a request for a motion to. Um, approve the release of ongoing funds. My own application, I'd like to hear from Director Reed before we decide that, but. Um, having accepted your report for information, doesn't necessarily mean the end of things here this morning, if you just. Hold tight until we hear from Director Reed.
Yeah. And I, I want to acknowledge that Mr. Andrew is also in the room, but we, uh, would it be? Maybe more appropriate when we get to that.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, my suggestion for Mr. Andrew would be that that should be under the variance request, and so I appreciate that uh, there's sort of. Uh, there's the public delegation portion, but we'll hopefully keep all the delegations related to the variance together with the various requests item.
That was my intent, but I wanted to acknowledge that he is here. Okay, then I think we move on to correspondence. Are we aware of any correspondence? Okay, then we move on to seven point one. Habitat for the Arts and uh, invite administration uh, with that be directory.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Waxer and Council, and Mary Anne and Garrett for being here today. Uh, so yes, the item before you is a recommendation. That committee direct administration to incorporate a focus on the following areas into the Habitat for the Arts twenty twenty-three deliverables. Clarifying the definition of both public open hours and bookable space hours and reporting of same. Clarifying the engagement requirements, including defining further the concepts of arts, culture, and entrepreneurial community. Suggested acceptable engagement efforts. What is meant by the phrase, invite and engage the arts and culture community to participate in the decision-making around the programming and use of space? And notification and invitation to administration of these engagement events. Of course, there are alternatives available to committee, that committee amend the focus areas for incorporation into the Habitat for the Arts twenty twenty-three deliverables. Or that committee direct administration to maintain the current deliverables for twenty twenty-three. Um, there is certainly a bit of historical background there, uh, twenty sixteen, we entered into. A ten-year sublease with IOTAD brackets Habitat for the Arts. Um, uh, in last year, there was a budget approval of twenty thousand to support the waiver of lease costs. An additional grant of twenty-five thousand to support operational programming. And uh, of course, on June seventh, council approved the policy F one oh four. Which is the relationships with external groups policy. Uh, which of course applies in this case. And in the twenty twenty-three budget discussion, uh, council approved thirty thousand dollar grants to Habitat for the Arts. An additional twenty thousand subject to presentation from Habitat for the Arts. Council, six months after the passage of the budget, which is uh, definitely what Ms. Garrett is meeting by her presentation today. Um, so attachment A shows the agreement and deliverables, and attachment B shows a summary of the twenty twenty-two deliverables and completion status. And I will, you know, read this into the record, Habitat has shown sincere commitment to meeting these deliverables with eight of twelve items marked complete or substantially complete. Um, administration notes that certain deliverables such as open public hours are not easily verified. And that deliverables around engaging the arts community were incomplete in twenty twenty-two. Uh, we did not see any indication that Habitat is consulting with or making decisions on usage based on input from the arts community broadly. Um, and we do have uh, regular reports that members of the arts and culture and entrepreneurial community are not yet engaged, feeling welcome. And finding appropriate space at Habitat. Uh, please note that in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three, Habitat did work in the spirit of engagement, uh, items in the F one oh four agreement. As reported in the presentation to council, and that uh, last sentence. Um, the work that was done in the first quarter, I don't know where that, I don't know what happened to the finish of that sentence, but it's supposed to say this work. Does not fully meet what administration sees as engagement with that community. Of course, there are many strategic uh, priority items, I won't read them all out. And uh, the financial for twenty twenty-three, the budget does include a total of fifty thousand dollars in operational support for habitats. Habitat for the Arts, and I would put a brackets in here, there was no uh, indication of lease waiver this year. And so if we compare to last year's agreement, there would have been twenty thousand dollars for waiving a lease. Uh, and for a total of forty-five thousand dollars, this year it's a total of fifty thousand dollars, but there's no indication of waiving a lease, so. Um, Habitat is being billed for for uh, their lease costs. Um, and the attachments as discussed, or as as mentioned, and I'm I'm open for any questions at council, my head. Oh.
Director Reed.
If I may, your worship, um, in the last week, uh, after this agenda was really developed, um. Administration, myself, has done a lot more detailed digging with the reports that were provided by Habitat. And so to answer uh, some of the questions that I know are already coming, we have authorized the payment of twenty twenty-two. And we have authorized the Q one payment for twenty twenty-three. Um, I will certainly uh, admit that that was a delay, that's on, uh, partly on our side, and so. Um, you know, we are working on administration side, I am working hard to get this uh, processed faster on my side.
Council, is any questions? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. Going back, um, Mr. Reed, the same question that I had for Ms. Garrett. Separated apart from. Revising the agreement. Do you see a need to revise policy F one oh four?
Um, Deputy Mayor Waxer, through to your worship, I do not, I think the policy, you know, we have several of these agreements with several different. Uh, groups around the community, um, and in fact, disagreement with Habitat, I do feel that the policy supports. Uh, the success that we are seeing and supports uh, further success, should we? Uh, keep, keep ramping up or keep evolving the agreement for for uh, clarity on those deliverables. So I do not see any reason to change the policy at this time.
Thank you for that. So far as I can tell, there are no administrative procedures attached to policy F one oh four. In your view, do the individual agreements with groups stand in place of a generalized administrative? Procedure document?
Your worship, um, in terms of procedure, I think the administration has been developing a format. Of agreement, which you see the copies of, the uh, I think, the attachments to the RFP. Um, that's really, really all that we would attach as administrative procedures. Because each of the agreements, there's such a wide variety of different arrangements between the municipality and organizations. Some may be funding agreements, some may be for space, some may be limited terms, some may be ongoing, uh, deliverables and meditables can be so different, so. The uh, administrative procedure per se is the format of of the document. That's, that's it, in terms of uh, defining what a arrangement should look like. We need to have that latitude, given the vast. Variety, the wide variety of relationships that we have with these groups.
Understood, so um, in terms of defining terms of. Public open hours or whatever the other one was, it. It makes more sense to define those in a specific agreement than in administrative procedures, because in each case. They could be different or simply not relevant in other cases.
Exactly, your worship.
If I may continue with a couple of other questions, um, Mr. Reed, you indicated that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, your worship, sorry, Deputy Mayor Waxer, through to your worship. I would only add that in the policy, there is a very robust section on what. The agreements need to look like based on what the funding is. And so that, with that extra work in the policy, it does, it does create the boundaries around the latitude that CEO given spoke of. And um, uh, when we have extreme clarity, I'll I'll use the easiest example, the library. Has a very clear plan of service, that clear, very clear in their own plan of service defines what a public open hours are, as a good example. And so in that case, I don't need to define it in the F one oh four, I just need to reference their very robust plan of service. The, to compare that with Habitat, I don't have the same level of robustness behind it in a plan of service like that. So then we do need to put it into the agreement if we're gonna have success with it.
Thank you for that. You've indicated then, the library is. One external group with whom. You would have potentially a, an agreement falling under policy of F one oh four. Uh, you mentioned that there are several. Do any of the others that are in existence require? The same degree of reporting, whether quarterly or otherwise, as is required of. Of Habitat, and I ask that, um, is I, I did note in the. Report that we received from Habitat. That it is described as intense. Reporting or intense requirement of reporting. And in fairness, I think the policy was a recognition that if we are spending public funds, there has to be some accountability. That we have to know where the, where the money's going and where the public is giving value for dollars. But on the other hand, I think the attitude was not to uh, so swamp any recipient in. Minutia in reporting as to. Detract from the service that they're trying to provide to the community, so in in, in terms of relativity, are other groups? Meeting similar requirements in terms of reporting? How money is being spent or how they are engaging with the community or otherwise.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Waxer, through to your worship and all of council, uh, so yes and no. Um, uh, when a community group asks for five thousand dollars. It is relative, the amount of reporting that we require is relative to that value. Uh, when a community group is receiving fifty thousand dollars, then. Uh, administration has uh, interpreted that as a more robust relationship. Which would require more robust deliverables, which would require more robust reporting. The quarterly, uh. Uh, with which you're right, is not in policy, the quarterly was definitely uh, a discussion point around. Working towards success. So the idea that if we had to meet quarterly and we had to agree that there was success on those deliverables. Then the payment would flow, but also the success would be clearly articulated. Um, I do take your point, uh, Mayor Ireland, that this shouldn't be a barrier, and and that is a. One of the things we want to re- or clarify is. The quarterly reports are not meant to be a a yearly financial report, those are different levels of input. And so that is a thing we will clearly negotiate with any group that that finds the reporting on us.
Thank you Director Reed, thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer.
Are there other questions? It looks like.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer, I'm sorry, I'm looking at page twenty-three of our agenda and the. Exhibit A and in the agreement and program deliverables and also service deliverables. And there's a phrase that's used in both the first sentences. Regular and special event programs that meet the arts and culture, community needs and also. Reading through the sentence about public hours and bookable space that meet the arts and culture, community needs. And the phrase and use of arts and culture, community needs, how do we define that? Just for clarity is to how do you, how do you make, how do you deliver on that? And what's the definition of when you've met that delivery standard?
Deputy Mayor Waxer through to Counselor Melnick and all of council, that is a various due question. Directly speaks to the crux of the challenge of meeting what what the community has repeatedly asked for. And what is reasonable in the circumstance? And so that's why I've presented the option for council to direct. To to support the idea of further definition of exactly that, that's what we're hoping to do this year.
So paraphrasing, you're asking council to define what the nature, is that, did I hear that incorrectly?
Deputy Mayor Waxer through to Counselor Melnick, to be very clear, the. Recommendation says. Support administration or direct administration to include a focus on. And defining exactly what you've asked for, what is, how how do we define if if I go right back to the words of the recommendation, sorry. Words of the recommendation. Clarifying the engagement requirements, including further. Defining for the concept of the arts, culture and entrepreneurial community, so exactly what you are speaking to Counselor Melnick. And what is meant by the phrase invite and engage the arts and culture community to participate in the decision-making. These are exactly, because we don't have that defined clearly. It is definitely part of what it makes it hard for administration to verify whether or not it's been met, I also would agree, it makes it hard for Habitat to meet it. And so that is absolutely why I'm asking for council to to say, yes, this is the focus we should go on.
Okay, thank you, just to be clear though, the. Appendix A program deliverables, service deliverables, community engagement deliverables. These weren't written by council. So administration is asking council to give direction for. What administrate, what administration is. Put into the appendix.
Yeah, okay then.
Yeah Deputy Mayor Waxer, administration has been working to activate council's policy direction. Council said anytime we're giving money or space to an outside party. Administration must have a agreement in place, a formalized group. Administration has operationalized that and we're seeing in this instance. That there may be some desire, you know, there may be some ambiguity. And administration is some people going away and insulting that. We want to ensure that we're still in alignment with council, I mean if council said, eh, none of this really matters, don't worry about it. Just get the money out the door, we can absolutely do that, if council said, well, actually. All of these things matter, plus these other ten things that administration wasn't thinking about, we can incorporate that. And there are some specific areas where administration. Is recommending to council that these should be the focus areas and those are the ones that are contained in the recommendation and report. Council agrees with those focus areas, administration is comfortable, I think, going away and refining the meaning of those. Because this is an evolutionary process, as we've worked with community groups. To make these refinements so that it is less of a burden on the community group in terms of reporting. And so that is, the deliverables are clearly getting at what the community is expecting from the organizations and. Council, as the elected representatives of the community, are in a position to express whether their opinion on whether we're getting at the heart of the matter. And so we're not asking council to write them per se, we're just asking for that guidance of are we on the right track here? Are there things that we're missing or things that should be doing?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer, just continuing on with Counselor Melnick's line of questioning. And I don't want to advance to the point of debate that I should have with council, but I'll I'll invite. You, Director Reed, or C O given to respond if you wish, but I. In terms of the recommendation, I am I am concerned about. Giving a suggestion that issues might be resolved. By a better definition of public open hours and bookable space hours. And a better definition of what we think might constitute the arts, culture and entrepreneurial community. And then use a different phrase when it's just the arts and culture community to participate in decision-making. My my thought is that. That might be necessary, but really, is that how we measure the success of this venture? Is the success of Habitat measured by the number of public open hours, is that? Is that the best measurement of success and so, I, i- if we. If we accept the recommendation and say go forth and. Give a better definition of public open hours, does that really assist it? It just seems to me that what needs to be confirmed is. Is how you measure the success of of this particular venture and I'm not sure the number of open hours. Is the measure of success. I haven't engaged in it to a necessary degree to to know how we might measure success, but. It it has, I think, something to do with the programming offer and the uptake by the community. And that might be the way that we measure success, so I. When we debate this with council, I may suggest that. Simply agreeing to a recommendation for better definitions of narrow terms that don't necessarily. Measure success is not the way to go. Similarly, that that phrase about. What is meant by the phrase invite and engage the arts and culture community to participate in the decision-making around programming. That to me suggests they're at the table making the decision. Whereas I think what is intended is that they ought to have a role in the process, but that doesn't make. The art and culture community, however defined, a decision maker. And there's there's a difference in quality and process there. You've indicated earlier that. There is an assessment of what the community says it needs. How is that community being identified, what are those needs so said? And how can we measure whether those needs are being met, so I just throw in all that, if you're interested in. Responding, that's fine, but it is probably more directed at my council colleagues. If we are going to give a recommendation or accept a recommendation. I would still like to grapple with, how are we ever going to measure? Success and is it simply by the number of open hours, I doubt it.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, I appreciate the mayor's point that this, you know, that may have, that was a general comment for everybody to consider. One thing that I really feel need to clarify for administration objective. I don't believe Director Reed or myself or anybody in administration would suggest that there's a measure of success. There there are multiple different facets on which council might. Establish measures of success. Hours might be one of them, satisfaction might be another. Financial performance might be another, like there are many and so. As councils thinking about this, I would encourage council to ensure that you're thinking about the different facets of success. For the different expectations that the community might have for a group that's occupying public space within a municipal. And so really just to ensure that, while there is this focus on open hours, because that was. At least one thing administration believed we had heard previously. And we see a need, if we're going to say that, to define what that means a little bit more closely. But that does not mean that administration believes that that is the only measure of success, because this really is multifaceted sort of. Situation where there are lots of different expectations from the community and likely from council.
Other questions? Is there a counselor ready to make a motion?
Prior to making. Potentially making a motion, I I just want to understand. Where administration thinks we stand now with requests with respect to the request from. Habitat, the specific line in the document before us. Says we are asking Mayor and council to approve a motion going forward. That will release quarterly funds, the six thousand seven hundred and fifty from the two thousand and twenty-two budget approved eighteen months ago. And the seven thousand five hundred, the first quarter of the two thousand and twenty-three budget. And as I understood, I think from your report, those funds have been released, so it. It's not necessary for council to approve a motion for something that is already done and so it might, I clear that. Two thousand and twenty-two is resolved and at least the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-three. Is resolved, those funds, if not released, they've been directed to be.
Deputy Mayor Waxer through to your worship, that's absolutely correct, there, the funds are already authorized for grants.
I can take a shot at a motion. I speak slowly, it's a long motion for this Aorn. Committee direct administration incorporate a focus on the following areas into the Habitat for the Arts, two thousand and twenty-three. Deliverables. Identifying and clarifying the definitions required. To measure the success of Habitat for the Arts. Including as necessary, both public open hours and bookable space hours and reporting of same. Clarifying the engagement requirements, including defining further the concepts of. The arts, culture and entrepreneurial community. Suggested acceptable engagement efforts. The phrase invite and engage the arts and cultural community to participate. In the decision-making process. Around programming and use of the space. And notification and invitation to administration of those engagement events. So some alterations. From the recommendation as presented, but mostly just to broaden the scope. To take a look at other terms that we might use to help define and measure. The success of program and a recognition that. Participating in the decision-making process is. Slightly different than decision than participating in the decision-making. So with those changes, otherwise. I think it's generally an approval of the administrative recommendation to council. Or to committee, I should say.
Any debate?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer and I appreciate his worship making the motion. To move this particular decision along. And also to help to perhaps clarify the relationship between Habitat and the municipality as it relates to the funding. One thing that. In the motion. That was encouraging the engagement of the arts and cultural community. It would be nice to know who we consider the arts and culture community to be and who we're engaging with. So I would suggest that not necessarily adding that to the motion. But potentially we should have an understanding of who are we talking about in the broader community? When council, when administration comes back to council with recommendations. More so and also to ensure that we're capturing all of the arts and culture community.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. I did understand the recommendation to include that particularly the. The the second dark bullet points. Clarifying the engagement requirements, including defining further the concepts of the arts, culture and entrepreneurial community, so. So I think that administration from my sense has recognized that there is a need to define what that means and. So I agree with your comment, my understanding was that that was included in. The recommendation and hence in motion, so I fully agree that we need to understand who is. We're talking about or we can engage them, but that is part of the. The definition is required.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, I'm in support of this motion, I might say that anybody can be part of the arts and culture community in Jasper if it's. Advised properly and everyone knows about it and I would think that you might want to involve everybody in Jasper in arts and culture. But I do support this motion.
If there's no further debate. Shall I call? Call for a vote? All those in favor of the. Motion to generate. Thank you Maria, thank you very much, Maria.
Thank you for your time, thank you for the clarification. And June Open House, so be sure to find out who that community might be.
If I may Deputy Mayor Waxer, I just also want to extend my appreciation to Ms. Garrett for coming forward. And I I hope that you will understand that we as a public body have a duty to watch public funds. It's not our intent to make this a bureaucratic burden for you. And I appreciate the intensity of other reporting, but clarification at the outset, I think will ease your burden and resolving misunderstandings early on, I think will ease the burden on you down the road. So I hope that you find some measure of success in your attendance here today, and we will find a way to measure success. Perhaps more effectively and efficiently for the operation that you offer to the community. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And I propose that we now take a seven minute break and return to the table at 10:00. 10:00. Yes, that's a bit long.
Good. We're together.
Call the meeting back to order at 10:50. We move on now to 7.2, the variance request sidewalk seating for Papa George's restaurant. And the administration likes to speak to that.
Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Waxer. I'll just speak about process for the variance request. And then I'm going to hand it over to Director Noddon to speak to the particulars of the request. So as I mentioned at our previous council meeting, this is a bit of an involving process. Council's just building our capacity around hearing variance requests. The ultimate intention is to ensure that in areas where administration doesn't have authority, that applicants have a fair hearing in front of council. And administration's striving to do that in a timely manner and to ensure that we support a transparent process for the public and for applicants. Today Deputy Mayor Waxer and council, I'd suggest that process should be an introduction by administration, essentially outlining administration's position or case, as it were. And then that would be following that, there would be an opportunity for council to call anybody that wanted to speak in favor of the variance request. And I know that the applicant is here and they probably want to come forward to speak in favor of their request. And then following the conclusion of anybody that wanted to speak in favor, council should offer the opportunity for anybody who wished to speak in opposition to the request before closing and then moving on to discussion and debate. So if that process, if council's comfortable with that process, I'd be ready to hand it over to Director Noddon or answer any process-related questions before I do so.
I think I'm fine with that. Directing the house.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. So this request was forwarded to us last week, so it meets the process that council had outlined where there's a letter in writing requesting for a specific variance for a sidewalk seating application. I can confirm that the rest of the paperwork has been submitted to the bylaw department and that things are in order on that front. We've also received received an updated letter indicating a five-year letter of support from the adjoining or adjacent business. So that step has been completed. And you'll see that the recommendation in the report is similar to those that were presented in council in recent weeks. And the basis for the recommendation from administration to deny the request in this case. We just simply don't have the authority to issue that variance ourselves. But this one, I think we recognize that we're looking at an encroachment about three and a half feet onto the neighboring businesses where the boardwalk ends. So the scope of the variance requested is somewhat smaller than what we've seen in previous weeks and potentially if the measures were in place for administration to be able to approve variances in the future, this one would fall more in the parameters of some discretion could be used and variances may be approved, but we are not currently set up for that. And that's why it's coming to council. And so this is committee of the whole, the first time the request comes forward, the attached documents should give you the information you're looking for. And that is all I have to present. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Well, we do administration first and then invite him. Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. I have a question of process to ask of administration. Making some large assumptions to begin with though. That if council was implying to accede to the request for the encroachment, is it procedurally in order for committee to direct administration to permit the encroachments? Previously, committee made a recommendation to council. But we are two weeks away from the next council meeting. In order to achieve a greater degree of responsiveness to to the issue, could could council, if it chose to do so, or pardon me, could committee direct administration to approve the request rather than deferring it again to council?
See, okay.
Deputy Mayor Waxer for Mayor Ireland. I'm going to say not. And so I would suggest that you should establish a regular pattern and process here. Where it isn't just committee telling, giving direction to administration, where there's a sort of a formal approval by council that a variance is approved. So my suggestion would be that this should all that committee to council. And and part of that is an important qualifier. I think administration, as Director Noddon said, this is were if administration had variance authority, this is likely something we would have been able to support. I would recommend it supporting. I know that administration has worked with applicants on provisional approvals, so that the applicant can kind of continue to move forward, subject to final approval from council. So I'll look to Director Noddon. I think that's something that we could probably manage. But my suggestion would be that we should make it clear that you make the request at committee, that request isn't final and approved until it goes through council.
Council Melnick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. So maybe going to try to read between the lines, what you're saying is we can, depending on which way we vote today. Administration would be able to work with the proponent. And that their final approval would be subject to the vote on June second or third by council. But in the interim, they'd be able to do the necessary things to be operating. That's correct.
Council Melnick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. And I guess the other item I noticed here is that on the diagram, we're actually not using parking stalls, but we're probably using what would be 15 minute parking in that area. In other words, a loading zone. And we don't have any do we have any challenges when we go into loading zones or that neighborhood where using parking stalls? And this looks like approximately two parking stalls. In other words, is there any difference between a loading zone area or a parking stall area?
Director Noddon.
Deputy Mayor Waxer through to Council Melnick, I don't think that's something we really considered in other applications, as in those 15 minute zones were not affected by the patios that were presented. I think in this case, it's in front of the building where it's the same business or the same operator utilizing the parking lane. And if they are willing to let go of their own 15 minute parking zone in front of their hotel, that's sort of up to them. So the level of service or accessibility to guests unloading to access the hotel will be more limited, but we are not considering moving that 15 minute zone or anything like that. So we kind of just take it at face value that this is something the applicant considered and that they're willing to replace their drop-off zone with a boardwalk.
Council Melnick.
You Deputy Mayor Waxer, they just going down the road, I want to be proactive as we're developing what we're doing with our parking and with our sidewalk seating. This being a loading zone, there are two other instances that potentially somebody may come to us in the future and we may want to proactively be ready for it. And that is encroachment into a crosslock. Where there's an opportunity to move a crosslock to another corner, a marked crosslock. And the other thing we may want to consider is if the encroachment is going to be to a designated handicap zone. And I think we should probably, you know, if we're going to be doing some changes to the parameters for administration to have some leeway, these are two things that we should consider that going into what would be a designated handicap zone would probably not be recommended. And certainly moving a crosswalk wouldn't be recommended. I can see down the road that there may be individuals who will be coming and looking and putting administration in a situation, well, you know, this happened in a loading zone, why can't it happen in this? So I definitely feel that, you know, administration's directed in the in the future, depending on the leeway and the guidance that is given to administration, this could have been something that should fall under administration, maybe more appropriately than coming to council.
Are there other questions? I would invite you, Mr. Andrew, if you had anything you would like to say.
Good morning, everybody. And yeah, thank you for giving me your time today. I understand the the letter and my documents are in circulation. So really, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding that for the directly from the applicant me.
Mayor. Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. Mr. Andrew, just picking up on the comments from Council Melnick. Does the walkway as proposed, take away a 15 minute zone? And is that a zone that the hotel is otherwise required to have? And if so, is it going to be shifted either east or west along the road?
Yeah, so we, the design that we have for our patio doesn't eliminate that 15 minute zone. Actually, it's still, it still exists there. It's just slightly shrunken, but we've optimized our two patios to allow for guest parking for the hotel still.
Council Melnick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. And Mr. Oliver, you opened the door then to what I was going to ask about, which is the other patio. Or the other business within your building. I noticed that there isn't a request for various. Will the two walkways be connected? Or it appears from your drawing that there'll be a well, how is the other one going to affect access to the east side of your walkway from the sidewalk? How is the other patio going to affect it?
Yeah, we had to do two separate drawings, which didn't include the separate businesses, because we have two existing business licenses. So that's why you don't see the other patio in that drawing. But it is a continuation of a patio being built by the neighbor on the other side, the Jasper Pizza Place, which will land on the east side of that that loading zone. And then it's copied on to the Papa George's side. So we had a unique circumstance because of the way our business is shaped. We have a bar, hotel, restaurant. So that's, that's why you see that it's a, you have a or I guess you don't see that, but it's a patio similar to what you see there on the dead dog side. Loading zone for the hotel and then a mirrored patio for Papa George's.
Thank you for that. So there'll be actually a one car loading zone in between the two? Okay. Thank you for that.
Any other comments, question? Is our councillor ready to make a motion?
I will make a motion that I will make a motion that committee recommends council approve the variance request of Papa George's restaurants on the basis that it is an incidental encroachment onto the neighboring property with the consent of the owner of the neighboring property. And does not constitute a material breach of the maximum size of the installation. And if I can speak to the motion. When this matter was previously before committee and council, I voted against encroachments onto neighboring properties. Council, however, took a different opinion and I worry now that we ought to move toward consistency in in variance. And so I I am inclined now to make the motion and support it, because otherwise we have a situation where where some would encroach and some could not. I think in this case, it is incidental in a way which the other one perhaps was not. And had this one come first, maybe I would voted differently, but the order is the order. So I will support it. And I also wanted to comment in my support about the observation by administration about where this might place council in terms of both public perception and with respect to our relationship with Parks Canada. And it seems to me that in both cases, that relationship can be enhanced by this. I know that in a regime operated by Parks Canada with really clear standards for development, there has been for all time, including pre-existing, the creation of the municipality. A committee of adjustments that dealt with variances. And recently, we saw a variance to a height requirement for a residential building. a residential building and that variance was maintained by Parks Canada even in the face of, I think, a petition signed by about five hundred people. I note that council did not engage at all in opposing that variance. So a suggestion that Parks Canada will be concerned about council considering a variance particularly of this incidental nature, I think is just unwarranted. And in fact, the municipality has recently applied for a variance um of its own development. Um and so the very notion of of variances are entrenched in this community and every community. So I think that what the public will see is that requests are formalized, they are done in public. Um council considers them in public and makes decisions in public. Um and it aligns with the type of process that has been ongoing here for decades, if not, if not even longer. So for those reasons, um I am prepared to make a motion and and support this particular variance request. And I I will say again, though, as I've said in the past, that if we have placed ourselves in a position where we are going to be dealing with multiple variances, I think at some point we have to go back and revisit standard. Um it doesn't make sense that everything becomes a variance to a standard. If the standard is not standard that it ought to be, then we should reconsider that. But for the time being, this seems to me to be the reasonable way to proceed.
Any other, any debate? I'll call the question then. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. We move then on to crisis intervention needs in Jasper. Director, and I'm the senior director Reed, who wants to speak to us. If if CAO given doesn't want to see.
Thank you, uh Deputy Mayor Waxer and Council. So yes, the item in front of you is uh uh the crisis intervention needs in Jasper report. We we you asked for this a while ago. We had indicated that we would bring it basically as appropriate and we had put September because we were guarantee guaranteed we'll bring it to you before we uh went into budget deliberations, but we had certainly enough information uh to write the report and bring it forward to you now. And the recommendation is that committee receive the report on crisis intervention needs in Jasper and that committee direct administration to bring a breakdown of the projected municipal resources required to meet crisis intervention needs to the twenty twenty four budget discussions. So the background, of course, uh as of March of twenty twenty two, Jasper Victim Services ceased its operations, leaving a gap in two essential services for the community. Support for victims of crime, which is traditional service offered by victim services units and support for individuals and families dealing with noncriminal trauma, which we will refer to as crisis response services. Um before the closure of the Jasper Victim Services, daytime crisis response services had always been provided by the municipality of Jasper's Community Outreach Services, while JBS via their crisis team would provide after hours services on weekends and evenings outside of the regular working hours. Uh since the closure of the Jasper Victim Services Unit, uh Hinton Victim Services has hired a coordinator to assist victims of crime in Jasper, but individuals and families dealing with noncriminal trauma are not supported by them. When JBS closed, some of the functions and funding of the previous crisis team was moved over to the Jasper Community Team Society. And this includes recent municipality of Jasper funding to set up and operate an after hours crisis response service. Uh during evenings and weekends, the crisis team at the Jasper Community Team Society currently offers support to individuals and families dealing with noncriminal trauma by providing much needed financial support such as gas cards, hotel rooms and grocery carts. However, they do not offer direct one-on-one support as was available in the past. On February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, committee requested administration bring forward a report, crisis intervention needs in Jasper. And the discussion is fairly lengthy, so I won't read it all. Um however, a couple of the highlights, we we did conduct an analysis of the crisis response work performed in twenty twenty two compared to the funding and the analysis revealed that in twenty twenty two cost provided twenty two, over twenty two hundred crisis response service hours with initially only being funded to provide about seventeen hundred. Additional grant funding was secured to cover the shortfall and other funders were not adversely affected. And based on the analysis last year and the activity levels seen in the first quarter of twenty twenty three, we expect the need for crisis response to remain at twenty twenty two or even increase. Um since the onset of pandemic, community conversations have been raising that they're seeing a rise in stress related to financial instability. Uh I believe council is well aware of the food bank increases and the food security response that council has authorized. Um and uh furthermore, this an important point since the start of the pandemic, Jasper has lost its local in-person Alberta supports office. And so those services have transitioned to virtual and regional and cost is finding that emergency income supports are harder to access via the online system. And there also has been a steady increase in the number of addiction slash mental health clients asset accessing supports from cost. And so you'll see twenty twenty, we did about seventy, twenty twenty one, about eighty, twenty twenty two, about ninety. And twenty twenty three, we're already seeing that we're at a hundred and twenty five. Uh for the first quarter, this all comparative first quarter stats. Um we did check with Alberta Health Services to make sure that we are still performing the work that they expect us to be doing. And yes, we are. So that is great. Um they also mentioned that throughout the province, this is a common uh a common stressor or challenge for communities to deal with. And they did, of course, uh continue to actively and vocally support the outreach model that we do have in Jasper, um which is, you know, wonderful support. Uh there isn't any extra funding to be found yet. However, they are very pleased with the way we are uh meeting the funding agreement requirements that we have with them. And so regarding the gap in after hours, no, sorry, cost is developing a plan to offer crisis response services out of the Community Outreach Service Office to meet the demand for daytime needs. However, we are actively seeking funding to support the elevated need for these services as they are not fully funded to meet the anticipated demand for twenty twenty three. Regarding the gap in after hours, face to face, one-on-one support services, cost is utilizing utilizing its strengths to build capacity to meet this need. The new community development department structure has allowed us to create new solutions to problems like this. And one uh solution we're exploring is that the client services coordinator will provide training and tools for the front desk staff, the activity center to provide soft support and referrals. This is a key. It will be referral agents um to provide uh uh sorry, to individuals in crisis. Uh strategic relevance, of course, take proactive steps to reduce the risk that people become vulnerable and respond when they are. Um we will bring the cost to fund daytime crisis intervention needs as well as evening and weekend crisis intervention needs to the twenty twenty four budget discussions for council's consideration. Based on the data analyzed, at this time, administration projects the need for an additional twenty five thousand dollars or FTE operational dollars towards community outreach services to meet the increasing demand for crisis response in the daytime. And uh after that, I'm open for any questions that council may have.
Mr. Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Um Director Reed, you mentioned about the fact that we would be looking for additional funding um in order to support this additional service. Uh how do you feel about sourcing and the chances of that funding being made available to the municipality uh other than what we've already accessed?
Um thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, through to Council Melnick. So at this time, we don't see any specific funding that would would sort of align perfectly with this need. Um and and that is why we were proposing that it would come to budget because we don't see anything on the horizon. Um we, there are some short term funding options that that may solve the problem, likely will solve the problem for twenty twenty three. Uh but for for twenty four and beyond, there doesn't appear at this time to be any funding. Um you know, uh we do have a provincial election on the horizon that perhaps that will change, but right now it does not look as though it it will be forthcoming. It, as Alberta Health uh has mentioned, it's across the province. So it's not a Jasper thing that we could get a special Jasper grant for. It's across the province, a need everywhere, so.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Through you to Director Reed. Is the concern specific now to coming years of twenty twenty four and beyond? Because I I recall recently discussions at this table about what began as a proposed resolution to Alberta municipalities for all session related to victim services and continued funding and we were apprised of a statement from, I think, Minister Ellis dating back to December that said, don't worry, we'll we'll keep running victim services, including victims of noncriminal trauma. Um and they will continue to get coverage. Is that happening? Or is it not happening from the perspective of our community? And even if it is happening, is the concern that it will cease happening uh at the end of this calendar year?
Um thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, through to your worship and council. To be very clear, uh the minister said that victim services units will serve um uh the victims of crime and communities will not see a loss in service levels. The clarity that that the recommendations are rather the more the the rural municipalities of Alberta and Alberta municipalities is asking for is, well, what did you mean by that? And we still do not have that clarity. Because if it meant noncriminal trauma would also not lose service levels, then there would need to be a financial commitment from the province to meet that requirement. But it has not yet been made clear that that is what the minister meant. And so, yes, we are proposing uh that we don't see the client need will drop. We don't see another source of funding on the horizon. And so, yes, we are saying for twenty twenty four and beyond to meet this need in our community, there will need to be municipal contribution towards it.
I appreciate that and I also appreciate that this discussion will come back to us resume budget twenty twenty four. My recollection is that council, the municipality funded victim services previously at a level of about twelve thousand dollars annually, and you're now proposing uh double that. Have efficiencies been lost to to double that um support? Or what has changed that we would be looking at a doubling of what previously was our level of commitment to Jasper victim services?
Uh Deputy Mayor Waxer, through to your worship and council. Uh that's a really important point. We are not proposing any change to that funding. That funding is for after hours crisis response. And so that funding would still go to the organization that's providing after hours crisis response. We are proposing that during the daytime, we are seeing an increase in clients that require the one-to-one services that outreach offers to navigate the provincial system, to find them the emergency funding and emergency supports that they need and to ensure that when they are vulnerable, we are catching them. Um some of the clients that will be seen after hours and on weekends will be referred Monday morning to meet with an outreach worker to go through what needs to be done. After hours and and weekend coverage of crisis response is simply that crisis response. Let's get you out of the crisis that you're in right now. But it is not the long-term solution. And so these are different things. The twelve five that council has longstanding been funding to crisis team support is not at discussion today. This is a new request based on the amount of time that we are seeing and project to see. But we wanted to give you this update with enough time for you to be able to speak to it at whatever meetings you may have, maybe going to, et cetera.
Council Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, and and picking up on Director Reed's um commentary, the after hours crisis support is being provided by the community team, the Jasper Community Team Society. And that's where the twelve thousand dollars that you're referring to would probably come up in the fall budget process. And then over and above eh what you're saying is is with a volume that's going, that's currently occurring, that there will be additional stress on resources. And that would be additional funding that would be committed to council, should the provincial government not step up to fund the uh victim services during normal office hours.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, through to Council Melnick and council, yes, that is correct, that your assessment is spot on.
This may be a good moment for me to request uh from Director Reed uh a description of which I think may be a useful opportunity right now of how community outreach services is funded and why it can't be incorporated, um why this crisis response cannot be incorporated in the existing structure.
Um thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Very knowledgeable question you proposed. And so uh we are, of course, the municipality creates what is often called the bucket. So we facilitate a place where uh provincial funding, largely largely provincial funding can be collected and then maximized into um services within our community, uh specifically outreach workers, the outreach team. And much of that funding, FCSS is a good example, um that funding is per capita based. And so it's not per case based, it's per capita based. And and that means that our population uh limits the amount of funding we are eligible for um for for many of those provincial funds. That's also a very good point for uh council to know when when perhaps you are at other meetings negotiating for other things, other statuses that may improve uh um that ratio. But right now, the per capita funding means that the the amount of money we're going to get is limited by the census, not limited by the number of clients we're seeing or, you know, the the workforce increase through the summer. Uh the the changes to the workforce through the other seasons. Does that answer your question, Deputy Mayor Waxer?
Uh somewhat. I I think I was uh just wanting to be clear that that uh the outreach services is funded by a variety of funders that and all of that is pooled. Uh and each of the funders has expectations. Um and the nicest needs are exceeding the expectations of the funders, that the existing funders.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, thank you for that clarification. Yes, when I was speaking about the bucket, so we do pool Alberta Health Services. We have some G Y P S D funding. We have, of course, the FCSS funding that I mentioned before. There are uh, my mind has just gone blank, of course, on the number of funds we have, but uh each outreach worker is a collection of those funds. And uh each outreach worker then has to meet the requirements of each individual funder. And Alberta Health Services, absolutely the mental health and addictions funding that we do receive, it it applies to this, but it is capped. It it applies to this, but it is capped and fining. And so there's no uh for on the horizon, we do not see that number increasing or another fund uh with the same parameters being available.
Mayor Ireland. Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. Through you to Director Reed, just so I've got this straight. The service crisis response or intervention or whatever the the appropriate term is. Is jurisdictionally the responsibility of Alberta Health Services, is that correct?
Deputy Mayor Waxer through to your worship. Largely, yes, yes.
And so they are the funder, but in our case, it is underfunded. And so I, you've indicated it's population based. Um, and you you referenced very well the connection between say this issue and our request for designation, because again, if we were designated and had recognition of um the increased volume that we have as a tourism based community, um and there were modifiers applied and you would think that we would be eligible for funding above our base population. The funding would still come from Alberta Health Services. So I can well imagine that they're excited by our cost model because effectively it's another way of downloading provincial responsibilities as I see it. I won't force you to take that political stand, but am I wrong if I think that?
Uh Deputy Mayor Waxer through to your worship. I can certainly see the position you have taken. I would say that without the model that we use here, the level of service would be dramatically reduced. But the amount of funding from the province would be the same. So I do see the argument that, well, we are also putting in more as a municipality than perhaps is typical. And that therefore automatically equates to a downloading. I do see the services received in our community are commensurate, in fact, multiplied multiplied higher by the by the model that we do use. And so the value for dollar across the spectrum is quite high in this model. Um, but but it is likely fair to say the municipality is shouldering more of that the higher value than other municipalities maybe.
Thank you, Ben.
If there's not any further debate, I would be prepared to make a motion, just um making sure all councillors have their opportunity to speak. And if that's the case, but I continue then. I would recommend that committee receive the report on the crisis intervention needs in Jasper and that committee direct administration to bring a breakdown of the projected municipal resources required to meet crisis intervention needs to the twenty twenty four budget discussions. Um, which, if I might just speak to that uh motion, doesn't commit us to the um taking over crisis management entirely, we still hopefully have the support of the provincial government. Um, but it is an anticipation of of what we might potentially after having the budget to be able to provide the the services given the volume that we're seeing through this year. And uh with that, thank you.
Thank you, Ca- Castral Hall. Thank you Deputy Mayor. I am reminded of something that you say often, and that is the sign of a great community is how well we take care of our most vulnerable. So I absolutely support this motion. And I certainly hope that there will be some funding down the line as it's a provincial problem.
I I think I would also add that there is a cost uh or there is a potential cost um to not meeting crisis intervention needs um that that may be greater than needing the needs themselves. And my other comment would be that I wondered if we if a friendly amendment would be to also um advocate to the government of Alberta to uh re- to recognize the increased need for crisis intervention services in the province uh since the pandemic and to uh ensure that both um that more resources are directed in that in that uh manner.
I would be uh that finally it's a friendly amendment to add that to um the motion that I made.
That 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 uh I'm just trying to think of the correct wording now that that uh count that committee uh or that that would that uh and we do some uh advocacy to the provincial government, to the provincial government uh that in recognition of uh increased crisis intervention needs in the province be addressed. And that uh that uh funds be directed in that in that manner in that direction. The increased funds Yeah, okay.
Uh Deputy Mayor Waxer, uh just thinking about how we can um activate that motion. Uh, maybe it would be clearer if it was a motion that committee recommend council uh authorize a letter to the relevant provincial officials requesting increased funding for crisis intervention services in Alberta. Uh, that way uh the what the advocacy is is clear. Um, and how we can complete that task is also clear, like just left that council advocate for something. Um, that could be kind of hanging out there, but nobody knowing exactly how to start it. But I think uh committee recommending council authorize a letter uh is a very direct form of advocacy. Um, and that will keep it front and center of the public. Um, and then we'll also allow council follow up that your ministers following the action. Um, and uh so my suggestion would be for that motion that that wording might be.
Thank you for your assistance in my summary attempt. Any debate? A call and a question, all in favor? Motion carried. Moving on then to municipal service to privacy, privacy, please hold.
Good morning, Mayor Council. The update uh for you was uh discussed uh the previous week um and up here. And so the recommendation is that committee direct administration, sorry, the committee direct administration provide winter sidewalk maintenance um on public sidewalks for United Anglican Catholic churches that enter into signed agreements as required by policy F one oh four. Also recommending that uh committee direct administration to begin providing uh winter sidewalk maintenance for the Jasper Historic Society Society and enter into a side agreement as required by policy F one oh four. And then council direct administration to institute a flat rate fee of twelve hundred dollars per year to continue pay uh paper recycling pickup at the post office. Um, and alternatives um are there as well. Um, so in October two uh twenty twenty two, the council was requesting direction regarding the provisional uh municipal services to a few user few user groups that had unofficial arrangements agreements and relied on uh municipal support for paper recycling and landscaping and snow. To ensure that we were being compliant with policy F one oh four. Um, we uh council would need to approve the following service that is historically provided by the municipality, which include uh the United uh church, we do winter sidewalk maintenance with an estimated value of two hundred dollars a year there. And which and in church, uh we do winter sidewalk maintenance, uh estimated value of thirty five hundred dollars per year. In November of twenty twenty two, council directed administration continued providing support for these two services for one year and in accordance with policy F one oh four to allow council uh further opportunity to consider funding this work and to allow these parties to make time or allow these parties time to make alternative arrangements should council choose to um stop this service. Further request was received by the Jasper Historical Society to provide winter sidewalks, snowmobile. During these discussions, the council chose not to extend their scope of service at the time. Counsel for the direct administration to return in April twenty twenty three uh to discuss the service provisions and investigate for any other normal arrangements or instances of service creep that may be addressed. So following that previous discussions, administration noted that uh Ross County is actually a municipal facility. And that on this basis, the provision of summer and winter maintenance should be continued. It's also noted that uh juror that jurors in Jasper is currently maintaining um or managing improper uh managing the maintenance of their own property. So other than those, um I can I cannot report that administration can report that there are no significant issues of municipal service provision uh to private lease owners at this time. We have, uh, we are frequently approached to provide services uh due to our specialized training and our equipment and availability. And um we have assisted, I'm honest, only when it's uh there's no, there's absolutely no other option. There's no other local provider able to do that uh service work. And then we are using our rates um charging back for equipment in accordance with the Alberta Road Builders Association. So there's a guy that's pretty standardly that we um base our uh equipment off of. And then we determine the rates uh for for the different uh services. So some of the services are hydroback, it's probably one of one, one of the most expensive pieces of equipment for us to operate. And so we built that out of that building here for three hundred and ninety dollars per hour. So some of this more stuff, um, you know, that's in including staff time and and wear and tear. So like a base um service cost for some of the smaller equipment is ninety five dollars an hour. And and again, we know, we try not to take on any other work that could be provided by anyone else. It's only as a possible in a uh produce situation. One example we use is the Marmot um skating required uh some shaping of their hill up in the top parking lots. And there is no one else with a grader uh to be able to do that work. So we ended up spending six and a half hours uh there fixing the road for them and we directly built them for that service. Um, another operating area, a recent change to uh regarding service creep is that we restricted the practice of wanting other equipment uh and tools to other parties. It was seen and it could be uh argued that uh where we where we providing our tools and equipment to other parties that a bitter one burden, one party may have an unfair uh benefit. And uh so it's not only protecting our equipment and reducing our liability. It's just not good practice for us to be uh as a municipality, and we also we've stopped that as well. A sub provision service to the Anglican uh and United Church properties is justified. And both properties are on high volume pedestrian routes. Administration would know that the same can be said for the Catholic Church and the Historic Society as they're adjacent to the Activity Center and are regional uh to the high school. Additionally, the United Anglican Church properties contain uh services such as the food bank and strip shop. The estimated value of providing the services uh for these places is eighteen thousand five hundred dollars in twenty twenty four.
Questions from the principals. Thank you Deputy Mayor. I'm just wondering if media administration or even Mayor Ireland, since you've been here a while, can explain to me the history of municipality clearing those particular sidewalks.
Not with any great accuracy. I think it perhaps predates the establishment of municipality. Parks may have been doing it um twenty three years ago when we took over. Right, I know that it was discussion with the churches, this exclusive of the museum. Years ago that whatever records existed seemed to have disappeared. But there there was that understanding, but it may have been something that municipality simply adopted, wanting to go to management of sidewalks from those kind of. Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer through you to Mr. Grayhead. I don't know that this makes any real difference. So I suppose at the end of the day, do as you choose, assuming the council approves the plan. But I am still struggling a little bit with interpreting policy F one oh four. And so there is an indication for the need for a formal relationship with these groups. And I can understand why we would want something in writing, but very recently just described it, it's gone lost. But if this is a non financial, that is staff, labor, support, or ongoing activities, seems to me that our template says that can be an informal relationship um with council approval. And the rules are in writing, but it's not a formal agreement. Um, but there are other places where it can I wonder whether it falls also under item K the the matrix or policy F one oh four. Whether an MOU is the way to go. I'm just looking for the the shortest route you can take to get to the desirable end. And it seems to me that the other parties are not contributing anything. This is not a contract, um we are just offering to clear their sidewalks. Um, so I did, I don't, I I don't want to have you engage in drawn up negotiations with what this agreement might look like documented in writing, I think, sure. But minimize the administrative effort if we're going to issue a candidate and simply document that we are doing it. Historical context, but because they provide other benefits to the community. But I'm just looking for a way to shorten administrative. The the indication that I got from the report is that you're looking at a formal agreement. And I'm just not sure that. I see the need for a formal agreement.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, again, an example of the evolution process here, I think, the terminology in the form of agreement. I think any, you know, lease contract, a funding agreement, rules of writing or an MOU are all examples of formal agreements. So it might have been a bit imprecise. If you look at Director Reed's report related to Habitat, you'll see that there's a document there called partnership rules in writing. Policy F one oh four. And it's a very simple one page document that says the municipality Jasper will and a bunch of stuff that the municipality will do. And then in that case says Habitat will, but really that would be the organization will and provides a bunch of stuff for viewer. And I think that that's as formal an agreement as administration is expected to be.
Counselor Malick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Mayor Waxer. And a question for you, Director Grayhead. We have the estimated value to be anticipated in the budget in twenty twenty four, eighteen thousand five hundred. So in the recommendations, that would include the three churches, the Historical Society, the paper recycling, as well as the summer and winter for Rossett House for the Chamber of Commerce because of municipal building. So that eighteen thousand or, you know, eighteen thousand five hundred labor materials basically for the year for those buildings.
Deputy Mayor to Counselor Malick's question, yes, our proposal or our options, our recommendation here is that we charge the post office for picking up the paper. So our estimated value of all of these services was nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars for the year. That's probably, I think we allocated about three thousand dollars for traction control or ice melt, as well as the time an operator to spend to go around and hit all these buildings in the room. So it is just a, it's a really good estimate. It's not absolute though. It's not, not a, I didn't build it out as a quote.
Anyway, I might just continue. Would there be any need for us to formally indicate that the Chamber of Commerce building or Rossett House is in fact a municipal building? Or is that just will that just be acknowledged now? Hopefully, it came up this term. Potentially it could come up in another term of council. Then should we formalize it in the recommendation here?
Deputy Mayor, to Counselor Malick's question, we are not adding attributed any costs to the Rossett House maintenance or snow removal. At this time, I've taken that off out of the out of the financials. Because it is our property. So we are going to be providing maintenance there.
Great. Thank you for that clarity.
Counselor Hall. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just having a hard time figuring out if we're doing this because it's a high volume or because we've always done it. Because I can think of a lot of other high volume areas that are private leases like downtown, for example, everybody downtown that has a business is responsible for their own sidewalks and it's a pretty high volume area. I I'm just wondering if we're doing this because this is the force we've always done it or because it's truly high volume, that's how it's been defined?
Deputy Mayor to Counselor Hall's question. That's a bit of both on this one. I would say that the United the United Church, we started first and then we ended up picking up the other church because there was the walking area between our building. Finds in manner, is that the one that's right there? For help on that one, but okay, yeah. So so that's where that's where that one had extended. And then that just got it. Ended up being an item of service creep. We have one. The mayor was mentioning that some of these are past agreements and stuff like that. The best that the administration I've been able to find was that there was some sort of a land kind of arrangement for the lower part of the McCready Center. So again, this is how it started and initiated the expansion to include the Catholic Church is just weird. It's the same sort of service and just for fairness and and openness, as well as the Historical Society, we pay them or we make a donation to this society every year as council, and then they end up subcontracting, subcontracting that workout. So it would be, it would by us taking that work and it would enhance what they can do with the money that council gives them and it would reduce their costs.
Any other questions or would you like to make the motion, a motion? Counselor Hall, I have one more quick question for Director Grayhead. Nothing to do with this, but just when you were talking about loaning equipment to other parties, what other parties would you have, like, are you talking about your machines? I'm just curious what what other parties you may have been lending equipment and tools, don't you? It's restricted, not sell, but just work.
Thank you for the question, Deputy Mayor. I can, I can say that there's, there were several contractors, local contractors that were in the habit of coming over and borrowing certain tools, such as our cement saw or our liquor, any of our specialty kind of equipment, construction equipment. And we view that as we began, we were almost enabling or paying a bit of favoritism to one party over the other. So we had to stop that practice.
Thank you.
Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I apologize that in this discussion, something else is popped in my head. If council or if committee provides the direction to enter into these agreements, are they time limited? I say that because I I'm curious whether another council might take a different position and how far we want to find the municipality moving forward. So I could see authorizing entering into agreements for some specified period. In many respects, this is very similar to a variance request. So we have a rule and the leaseholder clears their own soul. We're allowing potentially a deviation from that. Is that in perpetuity? So what have you considered about the length of term of the signed agreements?
Deputy Mayor Waxer to speak to Mayor Ireland's question. When this first brought up, was brought up last year, we only entered into a one year agreement with the parties who would provide their winter snow removal for that season. So when we had served notice and and brought this up to the, to the parties, it was felt that was unfair. They didn't have enough time to account. At this point, I haven't heard anything from either of the, either of the churches saying that they're planning on doing snow removal. In fact, I've heard the opposite of they're not in no position to be able to afford hiring a contractor for the snow removal. So our intent in this is, I would I would prefer our proposed that we would do this as a one year and then renew it every year. It should be a one year agreement. Things change. I think that I the dynamic of it is, you know, I'm sure as soon as, as soon as we have now expanding some of our services, I wouldn't be surprised if we're approached by other parties. So I think that the fluidity may be important for some.
Is there a need for committee direction with respect to length of term?
Yes, you worship that would be preferred.
Counselor Malick.
Given the parameters of the timeline, I think we can add a fourth bullet to the recommendations from committee to council. And unless there's another counselor who has other points to bring up or other conversation, I'd be willing to make the recommendations and cover the four points that need to be made.
And do you want, would you articulate the fourth point that it just?
Thank you. I would recommend that committee direct administration begin providing winter sidewalk maintenance for the Jasper, sorry, I'll start at the very top. Committee direct administration to provide winter sidewalk maintenance on public sidewalks for the United Anglican Catholic churches as entered into signing agreements as required by policy F one oh four. And that committee direct administration begin providing winter sidewalk maintenance for the Jasper Historical Society and enter an agreement, sign agreement as required by policy F one oh four. And then each of the two agreements for sidewalk snow removal before the twenty three, twenty four season. And I also recommend that council direct administration to have that be a twelve hundred dollars per year to continue paper recycling bigger than the post office for twenty twenty four.
Any debates? I'll call, I'll call a question then. All in favor? Motion carried. Move on then to seven point five extended producer responsibility. And again, Director Grayhead, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Extended producer responsibility or EBR is an environmental and economic policy approach in which producers of products and packaging manage both the financial and operational obligations of recycling, ensuring the materials are properly managed at the end of their lifecycle. Responsibilities include collecting, sorting and processing materials under the two categories, singly used products, packaging and printed paper products or PPP. And the hazards of special projects or HSB categories. The EPR regulations in Alberta came into effect on November thirtieth, twenty twenty two. And we're the last province west of Quebec to join and participate in this program. EPR or sorry. And the full implementation is scheduled for April first, twenty twenty five. EPR will significantly affect the Alberta municipalities and their respective waste recycling management sites and collection service. Therefore, it's important to consider the potential impacts when making related decisions in the near future. The ultimate concept on EPR is to establish a circular economy, which means keeping products and materials in use for as long as possible and regenerate and regenerating natural systems. This method was developed using the current linear model, take, make and dispose. This, this, sorry, this method was developed as the current linear model of take, make, dispose is not sustainable. Through EPR, producers have the incentive to rethink the packaging design in terms of content recyclability, which can mean longer lifespans and less warnings than material being produced. Innovative technologies for recycling and efficient systems for recycling collection. Since the costs and consequences of the products, packaging and its recycling will now be acquired by the producers. Producers are defined under EPR and include manufacturers, importers and or distributors of products and supplies to consumers and the profits. The EPR will bring noticeable changes to residential recycling in Jasper. And which may mean that the municipality may have a few options and that's still yet to be determined. The municipality would either be paying for continuing to provide the service as we are or that a pro or producer may opt to provide the service. Meaning the residential recycling is no longer a service that the municipality would be required to perform or we may end up with a hybrid solution. That is still also to be determined. And again, I guess I'm just kind of wrapping up quick. EPR really only addresses residential recycling for households, household consumer materials. It does not offer support for industrial, commercial and institutional sectors. So that I think that's in the council, all needs to be aware of. And the recommendation is that committee recommend council request the West Hill Head Regional Waste Management Authority to develop the resources to assist member communities in preparation for EPR. And I command the direct administration to provide a report on activities that we're undergoing to prepare for EPR.
Questions for Director Grayhead?
Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Through you to Director Grayhead, the second part of that recommendation, just for clarity, is that a direction to administration to provide a report to council for further consideration or to somebody else? Because I know that at some point we will follow this year, we have an option to apply to register or whatever the proper terminology is, but this is a report back to council, not to somebody else. Is that right?
That's exactly what was intended, your worship.
I appreciate the report. I think it's a way we have to go in any event. And so subject to the fact that I think other counselors could still ask questions if they need to. I'm happy to make the motion that committee recommend council requests the West Hill Head Regional Waste Management Authority develop resources to assist member communities in preparing for EPR and that committee direct administration provide a report to council on activities to prepare for EPR. Just to speak briefly to the recommendations, I very much appreciate the approach to make this collective. We, we are engaged with regional partners in waste management. I think to the benefit of all the member communities. It makes sense rather than each of us going out to hire a consultant to get prepared for EPR, which is coming. If we do it collectively, it will save all of us and we will have a more consistent regional approach, which makes sense. And the second part, you know, the report about where we are is important for no other reason than if a pro does state where they have to meet the standard that we were achieving as of November of last year. And so we should document exactly where we stand because that will be our, our measurement tool going forward potentially.
CAO given.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, for council and the community's interest, it's not important to note that for the municipality to be well prepared, there are some actions that will likely be taken ahead of time. As Director Grayhead noted in the report, the program coming to the province is focused on household waste and recycling. And right now, our system is intermixed with household and commercial recycling sort of bundled together. So administration imagines, can already foresee that there's going to be some costs associated with. So administration imagines can already foresee that there's going to be some costs associated with disentangling those. So that we start to have a system that is easier for a pro to take over or to fund. But that's exactly the report that we'd like to prepare for you is what are the steps, steps and costs associated with preparing for EPR? So that council can see that and provide authorization for administration to take those steps and potentially incur some costs related to that.
I had one quick question. Do other provinces extend the EPR beyond residential into business and commercial?
Deputy Mayor Waxer, my understanding is never been meant to extend to the ICI sector. It's only meant to do a little bit for just to consider this.
Thank you. Are there other questions, any debate? I'll call the question then. All in favor? She carried. Move on to the motion action list. CAO Given, would you like to speak?
Sure. Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Waxer. The recommended updates are there. You can send to the status column. There are a couple that we're recommending referring forward. That's the fruit trees on municipal property. This has been a challenge just in terms of the overall priorities in the organization, but it is of the lost. Director Grayhead delivered the provision of services to private leaseholders today. And further down the list, so that, I'm sorry, so that I don't get removed. The public transportation setting action plan item can be removed because that has been delivered. Of course, there are other follow-up actions that superseded that. The local service level impacts for victims of non-criminal trauma was provided by Director Reed today. And I believe that those are all of the updates that administration is recommending at this time. You'll see that the free recreation access policy item and list. There was a previous portion of that motion, which was to implement a free recreation access for seniors over seventy-five that has been implemented. And so you can see that that little note can be taken out. The next thing council will see on this is the policy between now and September.
Councilor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I think the one other item was yes, our block parking recommendation to be deferred till June. I don't know if that was mentioned, but I don't think so. But again, that's one of the other ones. And I would make a motion that the motion action list be adjusted as recommended by administration according to the status column of this report.
All in favor? She carried. We have now other upcoming meetings. Is there anything sort of related to speak to that?
Aaron. As you know, several counselors and some administrative personnel are heading off to FCM in the next day or so. Included in that is an opportunity to meet with CN at the convention. And I've agreed to go there. Is there anything specifically from administration that is an issue with CN locally that might be discussed in that context?
Your worship, I think from, I'm not aware of anything from an operational perspective per se. I know the council has previously discussed the status of Walkerville. So that might be an area that council may wish to raise, particularly with respect to the lack of provision of fire of water service for fire prevention or response. But other than that, and I think that's a fairly high-level item. Other than that, I'm not aware of any other operational items.
Thank you. Most of it is relationship issues and I'm content to deal with that. But if there are operational issues, providing that opportunity, there may be operational issues that come to the council table, but if we're going to be meeting with the upper echelon of CN, if anything does come by, send me a text. But Stuart, thank you.
Councilor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. It appears that a number of our counterparts will be leaving us and going to the meetings, as mentioned in Toronto, with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities in their absence. I'll be attending that tomorrow as well. I'm more than happy to participate in the summer staff welcome event. And we'll be flipping burgers, I believe. So a couple of commitments coming up over the next week.
It appears we may be hanging out together a bit because I also intend to go to Chana. And rather than flipping burgers, I'll be in the welcome tent at the welcome event on Thursday. I also wanted to make the comment that in this past week, I attended a number of the uplift festival events and just wanted to comment or express appreciation to the organizers for those really well orchestrated events. And, and just the sense it truly was an uplifting feeling at each of the events. And I also wanted to express appreciation to Director Reed for his long, long behaving in the tennis courts, ensuring that all the events went well there. So thank you. If there's nothing further, we'll move on to upcoming events. And I was thinking that we soon be seeing the musical ride joining this joining this list. Is there any, any other events that people are aware of? Counselors are aware of that should be included? If not, do we have a council, if I have a council willing to make the motion to adjut? All in favor? Thank you.